All right, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February 26th. It is 7:05 PM. This is a meeting of the Town Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following Town Council members are present in chambers. Johnlin Formkella, Jason Mauer, Janice Persico, Kathy Kohut, Venduva. The following Town Council members are here remotely. Donaldin Wales and Kevin Reed. Following Town Council members are absent, Sean O'Rourke and Enid Yellis. All right, item three on our agenda is our public hearing this evening. Pursuant to Town Code Section 470-34B, the Town Council shall conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input on a commercial tax abatement application for 1565 Monroe Turnpike. Before we begin the public hearing on this specific tax abatement, this is an opportunity for any member of the public that would like to participate specifically on this item. As for any other item that you'd like to participate on, that's of general Monroe Town government business, we will have public participation later in our agenda. Okay? So at this time, are there any comments regarding the commercial tax abatement application for 1565 Monroe Turnpike?
Hi, how's it going? I'm Anthony Galbo, the owner of 1565 Monroe Turnpike. Thank you for considering my application. Very much appreciate it. Just to give you a little background on the property before I took over. So I've been in business. We've been in business for coming up about 45 years. And for the last five years, we've been looking for a new home. Originally in Fairfield for the majority of our career. We decided Monroe would be a great place for us to relocate our home. So we looked around, we found 1565. The best way to describe that property when I found it was dilapidated, rundown, it was in bad shape. It was in many ways useless. To me, as soon as I walked down the property, I realized I had my new home. It had some of the things I needed for my business, certain heights, lots of space. It's pretty. It's a pretty place. It's a pretty place to do business compared to where I was before. It took me two and a half, three years to get that property up to where it is now. If you've gone up there. The color of the paint's actually Saratoga Blue, which is where I started my first business. So to me, it's a special place. We've re-landscaped. We've invested, you know, $5 million. Part of that's going to be green money in the sense that we're putting up solar. We're redoing all of our trucks. We're trying to make that a special place to relocate businesses to Monroe, not just my own. So besides myself, we brought in some, at least five other businesses. Long-term, I want to continue to develop the property, and that's what I'm hoping this abatement will help me do in the next three years. Continue to build. But I just want to say thank you. You know, my business has a home, and so I'm appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other individual of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing on the commercial tax abatement? Seeing no one in the gallery. We are going to turn online. Is there a member of the public that is here online that would like to speak on the public hearing for the commercial tax abatement for 1565 Monroe Turnpike? Please remember to unmute yourself. It is the microphone with the red line through it. Please select that if you are on your tablet, phone, or computer. Or if you have called into the meeting and would like to participate at this time, please. It's R6 to unmute yourself. Once again, is there any member of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing for the commercial tax abatement for 1565 Monroe Turnpike that is here online? Please remember to unmute yourself. Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing tonight for the commercial tax abatement for 1565 Monroe Turnpike. All right, and we're moving on to item four, the First Selectman's Budget Presentation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, do we want to take item A under New Business out of order to, so that if there's any questions on the tax abatement, we can?
Sure. I don't see any reason not to do that, and we'll, unfortunately, everyone will have to wait for the presentation.
Three minutes.
That's okay. All right, we'll take item of New Business, item A, Resolution 24-024. I move the Town Council to adopt Resolution Number 24-024. Resolve that pursuant to the Town Code, Chapter 470, Article 8, the Town Council hereby approves the commercial tax abatement application for 1565 Monroe Turnpike as referred and authorizes an abatement agreement as follows. Year 1, 30% of increased assessment. Year 2, 30% of increased assessment. Year 3, 30% of increased assessment. Year 4, 30% of increased assessment. Year 5, 30% of increased assessment. Year 6, 30% of increased assessment. And year 7, 30% of increased assessment. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Venduva. Mr. First Selectman, anything you want to be heard on this?
No, just that, thank you very much. I've been down there. I've looked at your work in that location, and your projections there are along the lines of great development in that area. That is an area that was vacant for probably the better of 20 years since Stevenson Lumber. So it's really nice to get a motivated owner there to see what we always saw. I mean, I kind of wanted shops and a marina there, but this is just as good. So very thankful for you and your commitment to the town and committing that money to further development down there at Stevenson. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I will note for the record that this application did go through the Tax Abatement Review Committee at Town Hall, which includes the Director of Finance, the First Selectman, the, our Economic Development Coordinator, as well as the EDC Chair. Am I missing anybody, Bill? Is that everybody? Oh, and then our wonderful assessor, Justin Feldman. And they passed the authorized schedule, which I just read. Additionally, after I went through the Tax Abatement Review Committee, it did go through LNA, which voted to adopt that recommendation as well, saying it to Town Council here tonight. I will note that there were a number of green initiatives, as the applicant stated, coming forward and renovating a much-needed, remaining a much-needed site. And the applicant did meet the investment threshold of over $5.2 million, which allows the authorization of the percentage of increased assessment, as well as the number of years. I will note that there are a number of new businesses in town that have either relocated there or moved there for office space, and that the applicant intends to continue to invest in the property, potentially adding another building, and inviting other businesses to make Monroe their home. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to point out, as part of LNA, we did have an opportunity to question a little bit here. If anybody is looking for any information, I highly recommend, in the Town Council packet, which is available online, is the full application for this abatement, which goes through all of the various initiatives that were taken, all of the investments that were put into the property. And the major parts, I made it clear in LNA that, for the most part, I'm not a huge fan when you see max all the way through, of the max abatement through all of the years. I think those fall for special exceptions. I like to see a tail off, something like instead of years 1 through 7, 30%, something like years 1 through 5, 30%, year 6, 25%, year 7, 20%, to see some change there with the max being saved for exceptions. And one of the reasons I accepted the recommendation of the max all the way through here, as well as to put it through for this vote, was a combination of not only the improvements that have already been done, but this is one of the few times I've seen a proposal that also went into the great deal of improvements they intend to make in, that's called their Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the property, to continue the growth of the property, as well as things like donations to Monroe. The property owners here as a company donated to things like the Wolf Stent Playground, and have really become a part of the Monroe community, which I think is important for our businesses as well. So that's the reasons there. I do have one question from our assessor's office as well. Just being, what is the total per year, I know it can change per year, but what is the current total per year that the 30% would be looking at?
Justin Feldman, the Town Assessor, currently using last year's mill rate, it would be roughly $18,500 annually.
Anything else?
Those were my only questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Persico?
I just, mine is a more general question. I know in the past, we've done a lot of five-year abatements. Is it going to be the norm now to do seven years?
So in our, so it's, abatement, commercial tax abatements are authorized by the Connecticut General Statutes. And there is an investment threshold which allows for the number of years, as well as the percentage that can be taken off of increased assessment. So at the $5 million threshold, the applicant was eligible to apply for seven years and for 30%.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One other question. Have we, and perhaps you can enlighten me, looking at the potential cost for town services relative to the abatement, and the number of buildings, traffic studies, things of those nature?
Well, I would say all that information would be with the Planning, Zoning Commission when they approve the project.
So when we considered the 30% maximum, we didn't look at the potential cost increases to the town?
I wouldn't say so. Anyway, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor adopting Resolution 24-024, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. This passes 7 to 0. All right, now back to our regularly scheduled program.
Our first was like a three minutes.
I don't, I didn't check. I'm not going to hold you to it. Item four, First Selectman's Budget Presentation. Mr. First Selectman, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody, welcome. Pursuant to Chapter A, Section 3 of the Monroe Town Charter, my budget for fiscal year, Ron, if you want to, go down there, let me see. Okay, thank you. My budget for fiscal year 2425 was timely submitted to the Town Council on February 8th, 2024. This budget proposed a series of challenges, all of which had considerable tax increase implications. Therefore, when preparing my FY25 budget proposal, it was paramount to control the tax impact on our resident workforce while allocating appropriate funding for keeping a clean, safe community with annual road maintenance and drainage needs to be addressed. This budget also includes funding allocations for future positions in land use, as well as cybersecurity initiatives. In an effort to better serve our growing community while continuing outstanding education and financial responsibility to all taxpayers in Monroe. I have always admired Monroe's exemplary municipal services and award-winning educational system, all of which are highly valued by our community. It is to be recognized that our education budget is the greatest driver of the town's overall budget, representing $71,337,659, or 68.8% of total expenditures. The municipal side of this budget represents $31,437,169, or 30.3% of total expenditures. The Board of Finance contingency and other special appropriations make up the remaining 0.09% of this budget. The municipal budget per department head request was $32,229,944, or a 3.14% overall increase. After considerable review, I have reduced that budget by the amount of $792,775, or a negative 2.5%, resulting in a final municipal side increase of only 0.60%. Our Board of Education has requested a 7.15% increase, which creates significant challenges to the budget and would create a substantial increase in property taxes. That being said, I propose an adjustment, an adjustment to the Board of Education budget of $1,187,000, reducing the increase to 5.40, or $3,654,235 to our taxpayers. This adjustment may be reduced by healthcare savings projected to be in the area of $500,000. However, that amount is being negotiated by the Board of Education. This adjustment will assist in the financial ability of the town of Monroe inclusive of all departmental diversity to conduct necessary maintenance and funding in municipal departments essential to Monroe's financial ecosystem. This includes, but not limited to, the responsibility per charter and the duties of the First Selectman, Police Department, Fire Departments, Fire Marshal, Emergency Medical Services, Department of Public Works and Highway Department, Town Library, Planning and Zoning and Land Wetlands, the Health Department, IT, Building Department, Sanitarium, Engineering, Senior Center, Economic Development, Human Resources, Finance, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Tax Assessor, and Parks and Recreation. My intention is to continue a fiscally conservative projection inclusive of maintaining high-quality services and controlling the tax burden on our workforce community through database conservative spending, simultaneously incorporating and seeking new annual alternative funding sources. My intention, while embracing the town's potential growth in our grant list, is to maintain initiatives for the continuing and future needs of Monroe. While deliberating working closely with the department heads, reductions where identified and implemented where possible to propose a fiscally responsible budget, which incorporates all awarded grants and a high level of due diligence in the fiscal year 25 budget adjustments. Our successful approach to the town's financial management has allowed our unassigned general fund balance to grow to $20 million, which is the largest amount on record. This fund balance exceeds the current Board of Finance policy as it relates to the top of the range, which in this budget equates to a maximum fund balance of $17,278,569, 16.6%, or two months of appropriated expenditures. I am recommending that $2,550,000 be returned to taxpayers in an effort to soften the impact of the forecasted increases of costs in the upcoming fiscal year with 400,000 additional to be held in contingency for potential costs not yet known in the healthcare on the municipal side. This fund balance initiative trends 50,000 less than fiscal year 24, ultimately making a small downward trend of fund balance dependence during budget considerations. By returning the calculated amount of $2,550,000 in our undesigned general fund balance back to our taxpayers, combined with the cooperation of both municipal and education leaders, this allows us to progress forward in a stable manner while maintaining a fiscally responsible path. Monroe enjoys significant and sustained growth in our grant list across residential and commercial property. However, motor vehicles have seen a decrease, with all metrics substantially impacting the tax rate, with metrics substantially impacting the tax rate. Without growth in the grant list, our community's residents will be taxed at a much higher rate. Therefore, it's imperative for Monroe to keep a business-friendly environment and fund the staffing demands addressed in the Land Use Division of the town. The current budget incorporates a projected tax increase of 2.03% down port, down 0.45% from last year's budget. Out of the total increase in operating expenditures, 95.13% is attributed to education and 4.87% to municipal cost. Thank you to our municipal staff, educators, and volunteers, including those serving on boards and commissions. As this process continues forward to our annual referendum on May 7th, our staff and my office will continue to devote as many hours as necessary to further refine the budget as the Town Council and Board of Finance continue their review. As always, I will continue to communicate any new information as it becomes available, so that further adjustments can be considered. This budget achieves the goal to present a budget that the citizens of Monroe can afford and support. Moving on to the target goals in this budget, control taxes, database spending, work on roads, infrastructure, and drainage initiatives, maintain a healthy education system, proactive municipal services, maintain strong financial health of the town, and a new commitment to strengthen cybersecurity. Our current projected grant list growth, residential is up $10,760,300. Our commercial is up $34,950,338. Our vacant land is down $1,084,100. That is due to some development. Our motor vehicles are down $3,831,529. That is the change from the COVID bubble, and the values of motor vehicles have now stabilized. And our exemptions are up $2,192,007, which is tax abatements, veteran benefits, senior benefits as well. The net change in our grant list overall is $38,610,200. The Town Council, the key drivers to this budget, wage adjustments. Wage adjustments, police, clerical, and highway collective bargaining units came due this year in negotiations along with non-union increase. The impact of minimum wage also is an increase on part-time and seasonal positions. Those wage adjustments are in the amount of $695,588. Insurance, medical is an ongoing negotiation on both the Board of Ed and the town side. And liability, auto property, workers' compensation covered by KERMA, those are up $325,000, $325,124. Our debt service reduction, reduction in outstanding debt is down $1,053,028. So the net impact of the above key drivers is budget neutral or trends slightly less. The total debt increase in municipal operating expenditures is 0.60%. The Town Council Strategic Planning Committee started its review of proposal capital budgets on Wednesday, January 10. This process will continue with further review by SBC, followed by their annual collaboration with the Board of Finance. So this chart just basically shows the previous First Selectman had put together a trend for unassigned fund balance. As you can see, we are trending as we had predicted. And along with the budget that was approved last year, this was suggested or shown last year, and this is the trend that we are here now. Ron, if you have anything to add in regards to that change? Because there is a, there is a reduction of 2.550, or use of undesigned fund balance of $2,553,000. But this trends from 23.8 to 17.2. So previous to my administration, there were some moves made and councils aware of.
So the, looking at the decline from '23 to '24 there, there's a, as First Selectman Rooney mentioned, there is the 2.9 million that's in this budget. Of the 2.9 million, $400,000 is contingency and may not be needed. $2,550,000 will, you know, this budget is proposing to commit that, so that's part of that decline. The other portion of that decline is the $3 million that was appropriated for the community center earlier this fiscal year, which wasn't committed at the end of last fiscal year. So that explains the decline there. The percentages on the top of the bars across there is the percentage that the fund balance relates to the appropriated expenditures to be in alignment with the Board of Finance policy that was passed about five years ago. So for instance, 2024, it's projected that fund balance will, in relation to appropriated expenditures, will constitute 17.2% of appropriated expenditures, which is still at the high end of the range established by the Board of Finance.
Thank you, Ron.
The potential tax increase received was 6.6%. Here are the reductions in a proposed increase. As you can see, the Board of Education proposed budget was $4,841,235, total of 7.15%. My ask of an adjustment or reduction was $1,187,000, dropping it 1.75%, bringing us to an overall increase of 5.40% on the Board of Education side, a total dollar amount of $3,654,235. My initial departmental submissions in the municipal side were $980,256, an increase of 3.14%. The reductions and adjustments on my end were $792,775, 2.54% decrease. The revised increase for the municipal side is $187,481, or an increase in this budget of 0.60%. What has assisted in this final budget decision was significant grant list growth, as you have seen, $38 million or so in grant list growth, and the utilization of grants and the use of unassigned fund balance to our taxpayers in the amount of $2,550,000. So our projected tax increase for FY25 budget is 2.03% overall. This is just showing a trend in the last three budget cycles, or four if you want to include this one. On '21, '22, we had an increase of 2.48. '22, '23, 1.38. '23, '24, 2.48. And we are trending down if this, depending on how this happens in May, but we are trending down to 2.03 if collaboration I'm asking for is accomplished. Some new information that's expected during this process. The medical insurance, we're dealing with a volatile rate environment on the municipal side. There are negotiations. Assessment appeals are something we, is invisible at this point. We don't know how that's going to land. The Seamers Police Pension, the final rates are typically received in March, so we don't have that. Connecticut General Assembly action on the governor's budget, we need to hear from the state in that regard. So that's still open-ended. And the open collective bargaining agreements that we have are currently, those are the police, clerical, and highway. The Town Council review of the municipal departments and submission to Board of Finance will be March 15th. The Board of Finance review, including Board of Education budget by April 20th, April 20th, and the annual budget referendum, which is our townwide vote on May 7th. So in closing, I would like to thank Town Council, Monroe citizens in attendance. I would also like to thank everyone who contributed to the reduction of the fiscal year 2425 budget, specifically the Director of Finance, Rob Benofsky, Assistant Director- Assistant Director Heidi, Heidi Mead. Uh, the First Selectment Office Administrator, Carrie McAndrew, and Office and Communications Assistant, Megan Morley. A special appreciation is in order for the municipal department heads and their staff for being considerate and understanding of Monroe's growing needs. Their diligence was made evident by the streamlined and efficient budgeting resulting in a minimal increase on the municipal side of zero point six zero percent. The municipal side is the budgetary responsibility per town charter of the first select. As Monroe welcomes new population and economic growth to our town. Monroe services need to adapt accordingly in all areas of our municipal and education requirements. While having consideration of space needs culminated from articulate and database information and studies. Various state unfunded mandates in both education and municipal service create the imperative need for cooperation across all services paid by Monroe taxpayers. This cooperation must be reached with the understanding of our current population inclusive of, but not limited to seniors. Households with students, households without students and individuals on fixed incomes. Difficult and highly scrutinized decisions have been made throughout this budget process by this administration. As we strive to create the best possible outcome with onus on operations townwide. This mission and firm goal of my administration is and will always be to consistently create a financially responsible budget inclusive of all demographics. While having a high probability approval of approval at the annual budget referendum. Thank you, everyone, for your attention.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Okay, uh, moving on to the consent calendar, item five. If there's no objection on passing consent calendar, as presented, bearing no objection on passing consent calendar. I ask that communication items A through T be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Um, and prior to public participation, I, I will just make note, I know, uh, there are many members of the audience that are here, that were here for the, uh, first selectman's, uh, presentation of the budget. I will note that, um, the town council will have a joint meeting with the Board of Finance on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at six P M. At that same meeting, we will have our public hearing for the budget, which is the best time to be heard on the budget at six thirty that evening. So on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M, there will be a meeting between the Town Council and the Board of Finance. During, as soon as Town Council and Board of Finance are finished discussing what we have to. I will then open the public hearing at six thirty P M. All right, uh, it will, the public hearing will not start earlier than six thirty P M. Okay, if we're running a little late with the Board of Finance, it might start after six thirty P M. But six thirty, it will not, the public hearing will not start earlier than six thirty P M on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Additionally, on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M. Town Council will have our department meetings with the requested departments. I believe we've requested all departments, uh, to come to that meeting at si, on six P M, at six P M on March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Um, additionally, one other budget date, uh, to give everyone is on March eleventh. Which is our regular meeting of Town Council. Uh, I expect that there will be a vote on the budget along with any potential adjustments that the Town Council has to make to the municipal side of the budget. And that is March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. Okay. And that's all I had before public participation. Item seven, public participation. I will begin with those who are in Town Council chambers. Please come to the microphone, name an address for the record if you'd like to participate. The rules for, uh, our public participation are printed, uh, beginning on page three of our agenda. Oh, okay, um. Whoever wants to go first, just come down, name an address for the record, please.
Evening, House four one zero nine Meadows End Road. Uh, Mr. Chairman, your comments were heard. I can't make the mark of the meeting, so I'm just going to make a few remarks about the budget. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman, for your, uh, budget presentation. Um, the first thing I want to talk about is the registrar voters. Um, I saw in the budget that there was a suggested increase to their salary from twenty-three thousand, five hundred to twenty-eight thousand, two hundred. Um, I would offer to the Town Council that that is way too low. Um, our registrar voters this year alone have potentially four different, um, elections to run. Our presidential preference primary, our referendum, at least one, hopefully one. Um, our state primary in August and our general election in November. You also all know that early voting is starting next month for the first time in Connecticut. Um, the Secretary of the State has said that she's trying to get new tabulators to all of our towns at some point. That's going to be another big asset for our registrars. There's always new laws, there's always new conferences to go to for them. Um, that I think that should be at least somewhere in the forty thousand dollar range, uh, if not more. And also for our deputies, our deputies are thirteen, deputy registrar voters are thirteen thousand, six ninety-five. That's crazily low. Um, it's just a little over, it's like eleven hundred dollars a month. And, um, having worked with the registrars throughout the years, um, I know how much work goes into that office. And I really hope you'd consider raising both of those salaries, uh, for all of those people in that office. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about was the Center for Family Justice. Uh, the first selectman was at the Wednesday breakfast in November. Um, I'm on the board of the CFJ and, uh, the CFJ covers six towns. Um, four of those towns, Bridgeport, Trumbull, Stratford and Fairfield, all have all. Trumbull, Stratford and Fairfield, all in their municipal budgets have a line item for the CFJ. Bridgeport has a part of their block grant from the state. So it's just Easton and Monroe that don't give to the CFJ, um, on an annual basis. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, two hundred and sixty-seven Monroe residents were, took advantage of services provided by the Center for Family Justice, two hundred and sixty-seven, at a cost of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. So if the services provided by the CFJ had to be part of this budget, that is at least one full-time person in social services, if not more. So I'm not asking you to consider eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, Fairfield has twenty in their budget, Trumbull's trying for twenty, and I don't know what Stratford is, and I don't know what Bridgeport is. Uh, but I think somewhere in the five to ten thousand dollar range, hopefully ten thousand dollars. Might be able to be added to this budget and could be, uh, a line item in perpetuity. Or as long as Monroe was part of the service area for the CFJ going forward. I think their services to the residents of our town are really valuable. And again, it's an eighty-six thousand dollars, almost eighty-seven thousand dollars savings to the taxpayer for their services. I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Um, lastly, I just wanted to talk briefly about the Board of Ed cut for the first selectman. Um, that is something that I vehemently disagree with. Um, I don't know if that was a negotiated cut, sometimes these cuts are negotiated beforehand. I don't know that, uh, but we're growing. Um, Juan Hollow, hopefully if it passes, will finally get another administrator that they need. We have the subdivision of Turkey Roost in, in discussions. We are a growing town, uh, and I don't believe that that cut is appropriate. If you just look at our class size for elementary schools compared to other towns, they are huge. Um, so I really hope, not that that's up to you, but I really hope we can reverse some of that. So, thank you for your extra time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other member of the public that would like to make use of public participation? Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joel Leniker and I reside at seventy Hunting Town Road. I was here at your last, your last meeting, asking or inquiring or suggesting that the charter might, might consider opening the charter. And I was wondering at this point in time, if any discussions been had or your thoughts on that? No comment, okay?
I, I will make one comment, uh, just in that it has not been part of the discussion as of this point. Okay. I'm not saying it won't be, I'm just saying as of this point, it has not been.
Okay, um, I believe the charter allows for, uh, a petition to be submitted to the Town Council with two hundred signatures on that petition to home or is it to the council? Is it to a subcommittee? Is that petition sent to?
Running through the first selectman's office.
Through the first selectman's office? Okay, um. The zoning enforcement, um.
Oh, and, and the town clerk, I'm sorry. Because the town clerk's going to have to make justification of that.
Probably is the person.
I would say, I would say, I would say both, yeah.
Um, the zoning enforcement officer, uh, I know we've had numerous people. Um, I know our current zoning enforcement officer will be leaving shortly. I believe there's a new zoning enforcement officer that probably is being hired. Um, my concern is consistency in enforcement. Um, planning and zoning does a lot of work to, uh, issue, uh, approvals, a lot of them include special exemption permits. All of that stuff does have to work through or a zoning enforcement officer does touch some of that. Um, we also know that for planning and zoning, we have no definition of what a sign is. And we know that signage is not being enforced, hasn't been enforced for a very long time. Um, you can only go to planning and zoning meetings and find the public very well-versed in the regulations. And sometimes there are mistakes and people do make mistakes, I understand that. And they correct them hopefully, and that's okay. But I would urge you, if money is a problem, to keep zoning enforcement officers employed. That you include more money for those zoning enforcement, that whether it's an assistant, whether it's just the officers themselves. Because we cannot keep having enforcement officers leaving every month. And I would include that into other divisions, town municipal, um, positions that I may not know of. That if we're losing people within a year, year and a half, over and over and over again, it's a combination of issues. But if money is one of those, then I would ask you to look at your budget so that we can enforce that. Um, the last, uh, question is, do we have any solar ordinances, regulations in our, on our books at this point in time?
For the Plains Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, the only reason I ask the question, because it does tap into the overall good for the, the public. Um, my parents own property in upstate New York. And I realize that's upstate New York and not Connecticut. But now there is a, there are seven mega solar farms proposed. They're going to take out, the average farm is thirty-one hundred acres, which was all producing food and no longer will produce food. You add seven of those, all right, to generate the power. I urge you, because all these little towns don't have very good solar rights. Now, New York State has a siting committee that, just like our solar, or just like our, um, cell phone siting committee, as you all know.
Mr. Leniker. We're, we're past the time, can you summarize?
I'll round it right up, okay? All I'm saying is I urge you, if you do not have one, please look at one. Because I heard solar panels have the projection of an abatement program. And you need to real look at that, those programs, because it's not as green as you mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate during public participation this evening? That's in Town Council chambers, uh, name an address, please come down to the microphone.
Allison Johnny Gettavsky, sixty-six East Village Road. We're here regarding, um, we read the inland wetlands meeting from two fourteen, twenty-four. And we felt that we were, um, accused of being poor neighbors by Mr. Rick Smith. He doesn't know us. He made accusatory statements, said that we never notified our neighbors that we were putting in a gravel driveway. When first we were putting a paved driveway. Um, he said this stinks, throw his arms up in the air and said that he refused to vote. Which is just ridiculous. We shouldn't be treated like that as residents of Monroe.
Or anybody for that matter. We thought that this should be brought up before the board. So it's something to be done about it, so he doesn't treat other people like that. We're pretty embarrassed in front of everybody.
There was a whole bunch of people just like them. And everybody thought, oh geez, they must be really bad neighbors, they didn't notify them, which is totally untrue. They were notified a year in advance. They even got a quote from our paper to have their driveway paved, which our right away goes through their. They decided not to do it, however, they also knew we were graveling the driveway, so they were notified several times. I could go on about the whole story, but I'm not going to. It's just that we were treated very poorly and nobody should be treated like that, whether it's a volunteer position or a paid position.
Why were we treated like this? Uh, we, we went through the process of pulling all the permits, doing everything properly. And we shouldn't be here. I thought it was going to be straightforward.
We shouldn't have been there either, we weren't even supposed to be talking. They said we didn't even need to show up yet, but we were, good thing we did, because that's the way we were treated. Three people voted, it wasn't a big deal, and one person abstained and said it stinks. And that we should have been better neighbors. We're very good neighbors, I hate to tell you all. We've done a lot for this community, we raised our child here, we've had a business here for thirty, four years.
I honestly hate your signs.
So it was just very defamatory and we didn't appreciate it. We'd like an apology and to know what's been done.
Something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate tonight? Uh, sir, name an address for the record, please.
So, my name is Rick Smith. I'm from sixty-one Hill Crest Road. I was just discussed. I don't know what the proper place for this is, but I can explain that these people were brought up because of a violation. They were given approval for ten feet, they put in fifteen. Now, it's clear out of drawing to the, to the approval, it was ten feet and they put in fifteen. I inquired that i, if the neighbor had given approval. I was never given an answer of whether the neighbor who has this, uh, this right of way given to these folks was involved ahead of time at the bottom of it or whatever. With regard to my vote, I abstained, because there's three sides to a story. There is the side from our zoning enforcement, together with the, the approval documentation of what you think happened. There is the side of the residents who put in a sixteen foot, uh, instead of ten foot, which was, was approved. And there's the third side of, of that of the neighbor. So without the full information, I did not feel that I could vote approval. That's why I abstained. Uh, if that's a problem, I will apologize to this Town, Town Council, but I'm not inclined to approve or to, uh, to apologize to these people, because in this town, I'd like us to work it out amongst ourselves and then come forward. If it was not clear. I can, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to defend myself further, but I still feel right in my abstention in this particular matter. We did not assess a fine. But I think it's terrible that we have to have problems between neighbors that, uh, come out because of a zoning violation.
Thank you.
Any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Is there any other, uh, other member of the public that would like to participate this evening? In Town Council chambers. Seeing none, hearing none. Is there any member of the public that is here virtually, either via their cell phone, uh, tablet or computer? Please remember unmute yourself, uh, star six if you're on your phone. Or the microphone with the red line through, please select that option, to unmute yourself. Once again, is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Bearing none, seeing none, I'm going to close public participation. Moving on to appointments. I move that the Town Council adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two seven, resolve that Monroe Town resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Paul Fernandez of forty-six Richmond Drive to the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term ending February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-eight. Is there a second?
Right.
Invited by Vinduva, discussion. Uh, Paul has been a resident of Monroe for twenty-nine years, has raised his family here. He has been an active volunteer in the community of St. Peter's Church for twenty years. And he has also been a member of the Richfield SERP for fifteen years. Paul works as an IT project manager, has thirty years of IT experience, working at local, working at a local healthcare system. Additionally, Paul brings ten years of EMT service experience. Paul would like to help support continued growth and development in the town. Uh, this appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Ross uh Starroco. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero two seven, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes seven to zero. Behind item B, resolution twenty-four dash zero two eight. I move that the town council adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two eight, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Sam Tucci of forty-six Mellon Path Lane to the Commission on Aging for a term ending July second, twenty-twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer, uh discussion. Alright. Sam has been a resident of Monroe for twenty-nine years, and held various volunteer positions with SERP, Boy Scouts, and the Food Pantry. He is a retired uh teacher, uh, he's a retired teaching and systems analyst uh for the United States Air Force, and is hopeful to be an advocate for the seniors in Monroe. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Sharon Lockship. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, council member Mauer.
Thank you. Uh, this comment goes both to that disappointment as well as next. I made this a similar comment at our last meeting. Um, I'm glad to see uh unappointments coming from both uh town committees, both the Republican Town Committee and Democratic Town Committee, uh of unaffiliated voters to positions to fill uh the these positions in our town. I think it's great. Uh, I think for a long time you had people feel a pressure to become affiliated, to feel like they could get involved, and I feel like I've started to see a change in that, and it's wonderful to see unaffiliated voters, unaffiliated members of our town, getting appointed from both sides of the aisle to fill these kinds of vacancies, so that anybody who wants to be a part of helping our town and serving our town can do it. So thank you to to all of these members getting appointment uh for their service and willingness to serve the town. But I I also just want to say a thank you to our vacancy chairs and everybody who's uh making it more possible for everybody in our town to be represented and to serve our town.
And of course, our first selectman.
And our first selectman.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero two eight, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none, this passes seven to zero. Uh, Mr. Tucci is here this evening, so I would just ask him to come up to be sworn in as our uh next member of the Commission for the Aging. Just, you can go to the first selectman.
Mayor Sir, this is my maiden voyage. Do you solemnly swear solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties of raising right-hand first principles? Your duties as a commissioner or the commissioner of aging to the best of your ability to help you God or upon penalty of perjury? I do. Congratulations.
Does he have to sign anything?
He does, I have.
Oh, you have, agrees. But don't go anywhere, we need you to sign something. Alright. Alright, moving on to item C, resolution twenty-four dash zero two nine, I move that the town council adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero two nine, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Robert Swatzky of four Jockey Hollow Road to the Emergency Medical Services Commission for a term ending December first, T twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
That's sent by Jason Mauer. Okay, Robert has resided in Monroe for thirty-five years, and prior to his retirement, worked in home improvement. Robert has been a volunteer EMT for about ten years, and throughout that time, he has been the primary contact for supply orders and maintenance of vehicles and equipment. Robert hopes to become a resource for the EMS Commission with this, with his appointment. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of John Brenner. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero two nine, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this passes seven, seven to zero. Alright, so that's it for appointments this evening. Uh, moving on to town council action items. Town Council Command on Education, Finance, Education, Health Focus, Safety Matters, uh they have not met since our last town council meeting. Uh, item B, Town Council Command, Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters, uh council member uh Duvva.
We haven't met, so nothing to look for.
Thank you very much. Moving on to C, Town Council Command, Legislative and Administrative Matters, uh council member Reed.
Yes, sir, let me just uh, let me, let me just, I'm having a little trouble here in my email, but hold on. If you would oblige. Alright, so we did meet tonight. Um, we talked about um six, six items. Um, all six have passed and uh reached consensus for council consideration. Uh, we talked about the, talked about two minor modifications of a licensed facility FM translator um application. Um, we talked about the MyRec.com standard software agreement, also the state of Connecticut DEMHSEMPG. That's a notice of a grant award agreement, the Mini Golf To Go Agreement, and the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health ELC two, enhancing detection expansion contract amendment. Some of these have been uh to us, these are yearly things, and some are new, but um all reached consensus for consideration at council.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, item D, Strategic Planning Committee, uh we have not met since our last town council member. I do anticipate us having a uh a meeting uh in the next uh month or so to uh if anybody has any questions about uh the upcoming or the presentations that we we heard, if uh, to just uh have those answered at that meeting. But we will work on scheduling that meeting uh in the nearish future. Uh, item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, they have not met since our last town council meeting. And finally, uh, item F, our first selectman's update, if he's not sick of talking already.
Oh, no, I got, I got someone. Thank you very much, Stan. Uh, this is for you. This is for you to take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will open, so, my first snowstorm. And I, I decided to go around the plow trucks and understand what DPW does. It's my, it's my firm belief that if you if you don't spend time in those departments and see how they operate, it's hard to speak about the operations. And being responsible for the municipal side and the operations, I was important to me to at least understand cursory, um how things go out there. Because ultimately, the complaints come to my office and I have to deal with them, right? So, um, the open mailboxes, I was in the plow truck. Uh, I noticed, noticed while traveling the plow routes, that several mailboxes are open, creating a higher potential for damage. So just to the citizens that, and we do have some mailbox, mailboxes uh struck. There are two different regulations, the town and the United States Postal Service, so there's some differences there, but uh just closing those mailboxes, most people do, but some that don't, at night, they're difficult to see. So this is just one thing that I noticed. Um, it's also important to me just to reveal how the protocol for plows, I've I've seen some concerns about how do they do that? Uh, just the police department reports the poor road conditions, I know I'm going out of order, but uh at which time the PD contacts Public Works under Chris Nwacki, followed by a contact of my office, that could, anytime at night, anytime in the morning, I've gotten calls as early as one o'clock and five AM, just to start initiating that snow removal, so just so that's transparent to our community. Um, and we start by plowing the main roads first, and then for passage of emergency vehicles, followed by the side roads, because some people get upset. My road wasn't done, but they have to do the secondary main passages first, obviously, uh twenty-five and one eleven by the state. Um, moving on to new hires and promotions, as you know, I like to bring this to the attention of the town. Um, Alexandra Castro, uh we hired her to the Animal Control uh Assistant Animal Control Officer, so congratulations Alexandra, and thanks for joining the team. Uh, James Clark to the Public Works Maintainer two position. Uh, thank you, uh James, for joining the team. Uh, Madison Cannellori, Public Works Park Maintainer. Uh, so thank you, Madison, for joining the team. Uh, Thomas Noonan will be our new Planning and Zoning, and Zoning and Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer, so congratulations, Thomas. Thank you for joining the team. And Ty Reynolds, uh Park Maintainer to Public Works. Uh, he will be be advanced from, I believe, Maintainer one to Maintainer two, so congratulations to uh Ty. The Emergency Services Update, uh Police Contract, the Police Contract was completed. It's projected to be heard on March eleventh in front of this council, um, followed by scheduling of the necessary meetings leading up to it. I just wanted to give an update. And the EMS building, we finally received our plaque from Brown Monument. I have it in my office, it's very heavy, uh so that'll be installed in the upcoming weeks. Uh, Capital Projects Update, uh St. Jude's still working on the subdivision, it's moving forward uh for the St. Jude's purchase. And an update on Pepper Street, Grosso provided information to BL regarding state requirements. However, the documentation was determined by BL to be incomplete. Uh, BL has requested Grosso to update and supply needed information to complete that documentation. Uh, a community update, uh I attended the hockey game at Total Moria Arena, where the Southern New England Robotics Championship is being held for the next two days. That event is being hosted by the Monroe Robotics Program, led by William McDonough and the other faculty. Uh, our Mastic teams will be competing in a collection of a hundred teams from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. Uh, I will be there on Tuesday, assisting, judging, or whatever it is I can do to help out. I'm really excited. I personally enjoy the robotics program. And then just, uh, I'm just gonna mention grants that we get, uh, you know, obviously, you've already approved this, but uh the Emergency Management Performance Grant um from Amy, uh thank you, Amy, in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred, eight dollars and fifty uh cents, supporting all hazard emergency management areas, and that is all I have for my update. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. That's it for our update, that's it for action items. We have no unfinished business this evening. Moving on to new business, uh as previously uh what we did, we handled item A already, moving on to item B, resolution twenty-four dash uh three zero, I move that the town council adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero three zero, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the MyRec.com standard software agreement, and any associated documents binding between MyRec.com uh for the standard software uh, and any associated documents binding between MyRec.com for standard software agreement. Is there a second? Send it by Vinduva, uh Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Monroe Parks and Recreation Department wishes to continue to utilize MyRec.com for their registration software. The Parks and Recreation Department has used MyRec.com for almost a decade for the registration of classes, programs, and information. Previously, there had been an annual invoice, however, the company recently changed ownership and are now requiring agreements for all their customers. Uh, this also has a letter of opinion from the town attorney. It's basically, Missy is here. It's basically a program they've been using all along, changed ownership, now they want to, so.
That is it. Thank you. Um, any other discussion, council member Mauer?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Um, I was just wondering, I know we have our Parks and Rec Director here, do we know where are the fees approximately the same, even though it's now a full contracted agreement, are the fees the same as when we were just doing an annual invoice from them?
No, the fees went up because it goes by the annual income we make. So it's a percentage, so we've been doing very well with our reprogramming last several years, so that's why there is a small increase.
Do you know approximately what that is?
It went up about two thousand dollars that we have to pay this year.
Okay. Um, and the, I noticed it's up to nine hundred fifty thousand dollars is the approximate value. Do we expect approximately? Do we have a report that says how much we expect? Uh, do we know approximately how much we expect to go through of that nine hundred fifty thousand?
That's something we took in the last couple of years.
So that's about accurate, is that that nine, oh wow, that's, that's fantastic.
Yeah, we've been crazy for the last years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't, I have a.
Sure.
You like using this program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash uh zero three zero, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes seven to zero. Moving on to item C, I move that the town council adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero three one, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents binding between the state of Connecticut, DEMHS, uh for the supplemental notice of grant award agreements. Is there a second?
Second.
We give it to Ben, uh Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As in prior years, the town has the opportunity to receive funding from the state of Connecticut through the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. Attached for your reference is a notice of grant award for costs related to supporting all hazards, emergency, in emergency management areas, which will provide funding in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred, five, fifty cents. Uh, there is a letter of opinion attached from the town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero three one, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes seven to zero. We'll be on to item D. I move that the town council adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero three two, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the Mini Golf To Go Event Booking Contract, and then any associated documents binding between Mini Golf To Go, DBA, Spin Doctor Entertainment, DBA, David Parks, uh for the Summer Fun Days Camp Mini Golf Events. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Selectman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, a wonderful Parks and Rec Director has a new idea. The Monroe Parks and Recreation Department wishes to conduct a mini golf activity for our Summer Fun Days Camp. Those of you who are not aware, that's our Children's Day Camp uh during the summer. Uh, so the program for the twenty-twenty-four season, uh once again, our Parks Director has recommended the use of Mini Golf To Go. David Parks, Spin Doctor Entertainment as the vendor for this program. I was under the assumption that you had done this before, Missy, but I haven't done this before, but it looks like you have, so.
Yeah, I just have to redo.
Great job, continue. Uh, the vendor's booking contract is attached for your review, and the agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero three two, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes seven to zero. Item E, I move that the town council adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero three three, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, and any other town officials required as signatories, are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection through coronavirus response and relief supplemental funds for a local health department district program agreement binding between the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the ELC two program. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jason Mauer. I am shocked that I was able to get through that. So, Mr. First Selectman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may be aware, in the past, our health department had received grant funding in an effort to support public.
As you may be aware, in the past, our health department had received grant funding in an effort to support public health, emergency preparedness and response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity supplement, E L C two, enhancing detection cooperative agreement from the state of Connecticut. Our health department is able to continue utilizing these funds to support public health nursing and community health education program. Uh, the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health advises they be preparing a contact amendment extending to the end date. This is in your pack of review, um, and also has a letter of an opinion for the, from the town attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing, no. All right, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-four dash zero-three-three, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes seven to zero. Uh, we have no second public participation this evening, as we have no unfinished matters of unfinished business and we have no unfinished matters of new business. I'm adjouring this meeting at eight sixteen PM.